This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at OshkoshMedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page for a schedule of all GovTV.
February 25th, Oshkosh Council meeting. Can we please take the roll?
Herman?
Here.
Muggerauer?
Here.
Crowsey?
Herschel?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Present six.
And Councilmember Herman will lead us in the invocation. And then afterwards Maggie Kildy and Blake Busby from Lord's Academy will lead us in the pledge.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She'll be right there. She'll be right there.
Thank you so much for leading us this evening. Maggie Kildy, right? What grade are you in and what school do you go to and what's your favorite subject?
Fourth grade, Lord's Academy and computers.
Excellent. My favorite subject is too. Where are you at? Are you? Blake Busby? Grade, what school, and what's your favorite subject?
I am in fourth grade at Lord's Academy Elementary. And my favorite subject is library.
Oh, that's a tough competition. Here's your certificate as well. Thank you so much for leading us this evening. Next, we have our first opportunity for citizen statements to council. Pam, do we have anyone registered?
Yes, we have quite a few individuals. Our first individual is Bernie Pitts. And then if we could get Robert McKay lined up.
One moment. So is this regarding something that's later on the agenda? Because if this is regarding an item that's on the agenda later, we were talking about potentially moving that up earlier.
It's not noted for these first three.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Bernie Pitts, I live at 617 West Irving. What I'm calling, I came here to talk about was the, what's on J-34, but was told I had to register and talk to you in the citizen statement in the beginning. What I'm hearing, speaking about is I have been informed that the ad hoc committee on the roads and charges they're planning on making would entail, like I have some four unit apartment buildings on Wisconsin Avenue, I would be paying $50 a month for each one of those buildings. Where single and two-family units would be paying $8. I feel though this is really unfair because many of the homes that were single-family homes in that area, to begin with, I must tell you that these properties have been in our family since the day they were built. My grandfather built them. That whole corner has been in the family from day one. The area around it has now been taken over by college rentals and there are single-family homes that have as many as eight different people living in them. And they would be paying $8. These four units have one living in each one of the apartments. And I think, I don't know how you're supposed to spread that out, the cost of that. There's something radically wrong with this because some of them on the committee have an enormous amount of duplexes in the area themselves. And for like 19 units, one of them would be paying just a slight more than what I pay for 19 buildings, not units, would be paying less than I'm paying for those two units. And within 25 years, if the fee stayed as it is, I would be paying $30,000 for the roads. I might as well pay for the roads. I'd rather pay for the roads, especially on a state highway where the state of Wisconsin is supposed to pay for it 100% under Statute 8632 of the Wisconsin Statutes. We landed up paying one-third of the payment because the city agreed to pay 25% when it was paved, but they billed us for one-third of the payment cost when that street was built and we had to pay it. And when I objected to it, I was told it could be used for the project, which the city at that time owned the Deltox property and the Radford property, and they wanted to use it for their project. So we ended up paying for the street. Now, I don't think it's fair that I should have to come now and foot everybody else's bill to pay for their street. Not only that, I have some other properties in town, one that butts from one street to the other street, which I had to move on because the city took my property under the ediment domain. I landed up paying for the street on the one side because the city of Oshkosh did not notify the bankruptcy court that they were going to charge for the payment. The city or the bankruptcy court sold the whole works of those units to the company in California, and they weren't informed that they would have to pay for the street. So I landed up paying for the street on that, on Montana and besides. Now, I also just paid for, on Minnesota, which is a street straight through from it, just paid for that this last year. I've paid for a street, every piece of property I've got. And in fact, I also own a piece on Monroe and Parkway. I paid for Monroe Street, and then when they put in Parkway, they decided to put an interceptor sewer in there, so they tore out part of Monroe. And so in 13 years, the pavement was down, I paid for part of Monroe Street again. And that's the way it is. I had to pay it. I don't think it's fair for all of us people that have already paid for our streets to have to fund these other streets when the city claims that we have got a 25...
Mr. Pitts, if I could just interrupt you just one moment. So these citizen statements are limited to five minutes, so if you could try to get to your point, thank you.
What I'm saying is this ad hoc committee, I think you ought to take a look at people on the ad hoc committee and see how many properties they own in the college area. And are they four units or are they two-family units? And see what they would be paying for enormous amount of units against two units, two four-units. And you'd be surprised. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else registered?
I have two more individuals that I don't know what their topic is.
All right. If it's related to an item on the agenda later, we are going to be moving 34, I believe we are going to...
33C.
1105 Jefferson topic, is that what this is regarding?
No.
Okay. Please come forward. Thank you. Is that your name and address, please?
My name is Robert McKay. I live on 80 Cop Avenue in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I am, I lived there, I've been there for 20 years. Now, I also own a business on Amro. I am the vice president of the big committee. I'm also vice president of our chamber, which is future Amro. So I invested my communities where I own, okay? Now, out on Cop Avenue, we've been neglected and totally. The city has devalued our homes out there to the point where we have to live in them because we're not going to be able to sell them for any kind of money. When I first moved out there over 20 years ago, we were zoning completely single-family homes in back of us and in front of us. Now you guys come up and you say, oh, Cop, Schwab Realty, they're great. They're such good landlords. We're going to turn it into multifamily for them. They're going to build apartments. Guess what? When you guys turn around and you guys made the switch over to him building apartments, he sold the land off to a guy that I got to pick garbage out of my backyard and I got these, the grades so high, anybody that pulls in there, turns around and I get light shining in my upper bedroom window. And looking up at these people, you try to have a drink on your deck and you got these people standing out in that apartment, smoking their cigarettes staring at you. How can you have a decent life out there? Now, the biggest issue I'm here today is along with owning my businesses, I also plow snow. The last 10 years, I plowed Cop Avenue for free for my neighbors, okay? Titan Realty bought or was given our road. I have a dedicated easement to my home and to County Park, okay? This Titan Realty is not maintaining this road. If I don't plow this road, I get no mail service. I get no garbage pickup. And my neighbors can't have their kids get shipped off to school. The buses can't get through. Now this year, after Titan Realty built a home across the street, by the way, with no water plant, right? And we were told years ago and all the way through, before they can build across the street, you get a road. We were going to make the builder build a road. But here it is, we got a building right across the street, right? He doesn't even have service to this building to have this poor guy that bought out there, right? Doesn't even get the plow, snowplow service. If I didn't do this for my neighbors, right, it wouldn't be done. That sounds, oh geez, a little bit of diesel fuel, a little bit of time, you got it, you got it, right? Okay, how about three weeks ago, my truck split a $3,000 cancer case audit, okay? I don't see these guys lining up to give me a line in my pockets. And you call Titan Realty, say, hey, what's your plan out there? He has no plan. He tries boasting and all this other stuff. Well, being a businessman in Amro and being connected to my community, I found he has a couple ends with the city. That's how he was allowed to build a house without improving that road. Now, I would want this city to come forth and stop devaluing my home by allowing apartments in the back, and now you guys are allowing duplexes across the street. Now, it sounds fine. Oh, that's him, that's him over there. What if it was your homes? What would you do? Would you want it devalued?
So Mr. McKay, you're at the five-minute mark. City Major, is there staff that can follow up with Mr. McKay on some of the questions about the road?
Well, that's a private road. We're certainly happy to talk to them, but it's owned privately.
It's a private, it's a private.
It's a private road.
But we were told when that guy was able to build across the street, that hell road had to be improved to city conditions. And it is not.
It's a private matter that has to get resolved by the private property owners. Unfortunately, this predates me, so I don't have, I don't have the history, but I've learned the history over the years and it's an ongoing issue. And I think the winter time is probably the worst of all because of the condition of this...
But you allowed somebody to build a house, not even a snowplow guy to come out there. So he, Titan, Titan, I found this out, Titan has some close connections with the city. That's why he was allowed to do it.
I'm not familiar with Titan Realty, so I can't answer that question.
I don't know the name of that person either.
So all one more comment and I'll leave you guys to your stuff. I've been out there for over 20 years. Every time some company walked in the store, even though I have every one of my neighbors here, right? Said, we don't want that, we don't want that, we don't want that. You went with the big corporations and you didn't care one iota about the individual standing in front of you. I think it's time that you start caring about the individuals and saying to these companies that want to make millions off of devaluing my home and my neighbor's home, saying, guess what? The little guy deserves a break. Other than that, you know, then you're going to keep on going for the business, going for the big business.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else registered?
I have one more individual that has not indicated, and that's Jackie Steiner.
I'm on the...
Okay. All right. Just hold up, get to you. All right.
Before we move on, Mr. Rolfe, could we check into some of Mr. McKay's concerns? What, I know it's a private road and, you know, Cop Ave, in my 10 years in councils, come up several times. Could we at least look into, you know, some of the zoning issues and do we have it? What is its zone? I know there's apartments on all sides of Cop Avenue now and that, and obviously there's no develop, is there a developer agreement like we normally have in these subdivision-type setups? I know it predates you, so... Yeah, I haven't looked at this in several years. I'd be happy to do that and report back to council. Have your staff look into it for him. And Mr. McKay, before you leave, if we don't have your phone number, can we get it? Thank you. If you can give it to the officer. Thank you, Lieutenant. Go ahead.
All right. So moving on to the consent agenda, do we have anyone registered to speak on any of the consent items?
No, we do not.
All right. Back to council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you. Is Mr. Van Gompel back there by chance?
Yes. I just have a question on the, let me get it here, refunding of property taxes on Resolution 20-71.
I know it's not a lot of money, but could you just, why are we, just kind of give us the, why we're rescinding the property taxes here?
All three of these are personal properties and usually what happens is they're all self-reported by the individuals and sometimes there's clerical errors that have to get them correct it. But that's what we're doing on this one, on these.
Okay.
Bruce, these are businesses and this is regarded as personal property tax that we report in?
Yeah, all four of these are personal property tax items.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, go ahead. And I have one more. Unless someone else has a question?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Herschel, and then back to Mr. Herman.
Thank you.
Sure. So clerical error, you mean their clerical error on their self-reporting or an error on our part?
It could be a very, it could be a couple of different things, but most of the time it's just really an error on their part where they submit something on the wrong line item or the wrong dollar amount, or if they no longer are eligible to be paying that tax and the tax has already been levied, then we have to go back and rescind it.
Now, do they do that, do they submit that information electronically or do they, do we send them a paper form to do that?
I think Mr. Davis is going to come up because you're asking now, you're asking an assessing question.
But don't go far, Mr. Van Gompel. After Deputy Mayor Herman, I have one for you.
Go ahead, you ask your question if it's referenced in.
We use forms from the Department of Revenue for reporting on all the schedules for personal property. And those personal property come and go through the years, things get bought and sold or depreciated, and they don't always update their schedules. And once they catch up, that's when they get, let us know that the personal property isn't in the city anymore, and that's why we should remove it from the roll and that's why we rescind the taxes.
Okay. Now, thank you. Now, I have one more follow-up.
If we can go over to Ms. Herman and then back to you.
Okay.
Okay. This is maybe a clerk's question. This is Resolution 20-88, Star Transportation. I think some of us are aware of Mr. Davis's concern about another cab company. Do we know, are they coming, have they applied for a city license to be a cab company in the city? Or what is the taxi cab licenses for?
They submitted their application and met the inspections, so they've met the requirements to be taxi cab.
So we're going to have another cab company be in the city besides City Cab and All-Star and I think it's Dial-A-Ride or whatever that one is?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure because there was some concern about competition and things like that. All right, thank you.
All right. Back to Councilmember Herschel.
Yeah, I'm not sure that Davey's concern was related to taxi cab competition, but more so the Uber and the Lyft and stuff like that. I think they, they might welcome that, you know, regular taxi cab competition, so, from my understanding. Now, I forgot, hold on, give me a second.
Well, while you're thinking about it, can I go on to another one? All right. 20-76 and 20-77, Mr. Van Gompel. So here we're talking about holding open, I believe this is, these are the ones that are holding open those TIPS an extra year for some additional housing funding?
Yes. State law permits us to extend the life of a TIF district one year, and that has to go into our Healthy Neighborhoods Fund.
So I just wanted to ask Mr. Van Gompel how you feel about holding those open, each of those another year?
Yeah, it's a great program, Healthy Neighborhoods, and to get the funding for affordable housing. You know, what it does is it just delays putting everything back onto the city and the other taxing jurisdictions. But this is a mechanism that was put into play about four or five years ago from the state in order for us to develop housing initiatives. And it's worked well. As a matter of fact, one of our staff members was at the Ellers Seminar and talked about how the success stories of Oshkosh and how it's working in other communities. He was one of the panel discussion folks talked about. So it's good.
So either Mr. Davis or Mr. Van Gompel, we're talking about like $6,000 on one and like 12 on the other. So I guess just help me understand or, you know, help folks understand, is it going to cost us more to keep those open than the benefit we're deriving from holding them open?
The city has an opportunity to use it for affordable housing rather than the economic development because the economic development has actually passed for those TIF districts. So the legislature allowed us to keep it open just for affordable housing. So that's what we have chosen to do because affordable housing is just as important as our economic development tips. So that's what council's decided in the last three or four years.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on items on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, can we please call the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Herschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. Before we go on to pending ordinances, I believe one of the council members had an interest in moving one of the items at the end of our agenda up to after consent. And that's regarding the TLP at 1105 Jefferson discussion. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move 33C to, that what we're asking, to be our next item on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right. Can we please take the roll?
Herman?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Herschel?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
So what we'll do then is for those of you who are here and registered to speak on this item, if you haven't registered, you can see the officer here. And as the clerk calls your name and the next name afterwards, if you could kind of line up, we'd appreciate that. And keep your comments to five minutes if you would. Thank you for coming. Who do we have first registered to speak?
Okay. First individual is Jackie Steiner, and then next up is going to be Bruce Kundy.
Okay. Jackie and then Bruce. Bruce, if you could work your way over to stand up behind Jackie. Thank you. And please give your address.
Hi, I'm Jackie Steiner. I live at 915 West Spith Ave. I am here tonight in support of Jamie and the whole Jefferson street community. I am asking for an ordinance or special zoning requirements for the transitional housing specifically for sex offenders in the city of Oshkosh. I find it almost irresponsible and deceptive that the city and the school district are willing to almost put out a referendum to combine two public middle schools and all of those students less than 800 feet from a house of sex offenders that are not being monitored as they should be. And doing this without informing the parents of this TLP in the referendum. As a community, I think our first priority should be the safety of our community and our children, especially our children. It's my understanding that this house is taxpayer-funded and that Triniteam is not meeting their contract requirements. And I think that since that is not being fulfilled, their contract should be voided. Thank you.
Next, Bruce, and then who's after Bruce?
Then we have Joe Stevenson.
Yeah. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Bruce Kundy, 1115 Jefferson Street, Oshkosh. And I am here, part of the neighborhood, to bring awareness to you folks regarding the TLP at 1105. I think there is a conflict between reality and perception as to what's going on there. And we've had a front seat to the whole thing since 2010. And there has been times that we've met with the city, police department, meeting with you folks. We've done a number of things trying to get awareness out to you folks as to really what's going on there. And as she had mentioned earlier, there are a number of situations that we've documented that there are breach of contract issues that have not been met. And then we feel that the provider that oversees that location, they are self-regulated, are not living up to their contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and who's registered after?
After Joe Stevenson is Elizabeth Ann Schleck.
Okay. Elizabeth, if you could work your way towards the front.
Hey, I'm Joe Stevenson. I live at 934 Jefferson Street. I'm here kind of on behalf of the Midtown Neighborhood Association. I know you guys probably heard some complaints throughout these past 10 years and obviously heard people here today. And I just kind of wanted to put some clarity to the situation and kind of give what we really are asking here. So first and foremost, we do think that the TLP home is not being run properly by this organization. We do feel there's some maybe oversight issues by Triniteam. We also feel that there should probably be greater care taken when these facilities do go into a home and, or go into a neighborhood. And by no means are we, I don't think we're blaming the city for anything. This really is a contract between the DOT and Triniteam. But we would just like the city's support in locating these places in a safe neighborhood and also keeping this oversight with these companies. I think we all do understand that these TLPs are a vital role in our society and they play incremental role in making sure that these individuals ultimately enter society again and become successful members of society. And that's ultimately what we want. We want them to enter society again, never commit another crime. That's what should happen. But we do think that the company is not providing them the tools that they need to be successful. The company, like many have mentioned, the company doesn't have good oversight. There've been a number of missed, they have checkups, there's been a number of missed checkups. There's a few other parts of the contract that we feel that haven't been obligated. And as well as, I know in other counties, they do, they do programming for these individuals. And I'm not a social worker by any means, but I do feel these individuals would benefit from some sort of programming that's not being offered to them right now. Just to kind of further, I think exacerbate the situation is that it is very close to a middle school. It's very close to where children congregate, and this is a high-ped area. People walk there all the time. They're, and I just think that situation isn't setting anybody up for success. It's not helping these individuals. It's not helping the neighborhood. So I guess here, really what we're urging you guys to do is to have that meeting, have that workshop, discuss these TLPs as a land use, and then maybe look into possibly having some sort of special use process or zoning review to make sure that these things do get, kind of double-check when they do go into a neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth? And do we have anyone after Elizabeth?
Yes. Jamie O'Brien?
Good evening. My name is Beth Schleck and I live at 1216 Jefferson Street. I'm here to discuss and bring attention to the paper notices for 1105 Jefferson for the sex offender information bulletins, like this one here. I just received this one yesterday. Unfortunately, it's the first one I've had in months. And it's also come to my attention that two more came out yesterday from neighbors. We all got different ones. We don't even have the same offenders moving in. I mean, they're all moving in, but I got one, a neighbor got a different one. They're not even the same offender. So they're not consistent. Like I said, I haven't gotten it in months, but I know we have, there's been people that moved in. moved in. I also heard, and I'd like this clarification, that the OPD wants to get away from doing the paper notices and go to email. That's not going to work. We have residents or neighbors in our, in our community that don't even have a cell phone, no access to internet. I have a 101-year-old lady lives next to, behind me. What's she going to do? With the extremely high turnaround rate of the TLP at 1105 Jefferson, families like mine hang them on their fridges to use them as a constant visual reminder of who to watch out for and who to avoid. Which brings up another point. Because of the very high turnover rate at this TLP and trying to remember who's who, is there any way we can get any notices that we've asked for, for when these, an individual leaves, so we can take that notice down to make room for the many more? You can't keep track of, I mean, you can't keep track of them. I have a sex offender, registered sex offender that lives right across the street, been there for years. No problem. I know him by sight. But when there's over 100 ones that can get admitted to this one property in one year, you can't remember them. So I'm just asking for consistent paper notices be delivered to our homes. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. And it's Jamie, is that right?
Jamie O'Brien and then Betsy Kundy.
Hello. My name is Jamie O'Brien and my address is 1120 Jefferson Street. So I am here tonight asking you to set regulations by implementing special use zoning requirements or create an ordinance with restrictions on where transitional housing units in Oshkosh can be placed. We are not asking for an ordinance regarding all sexual predators or those on the registry. We are specifically speaking about transitional housing units. This house has paid $147,000 per two-year contract with the state, no property tax, and the potential to house up to eight special bulletin notice predators at any given time. Since it is transitional, there could be anywhere between, I would guess, 50 to 100 people in and out of that house per year. This house is in such high demand that they are going to be placing more around the city. If we don't get something organized soon, we're really setting ourselves up for trouble. You mentioned that the talks started five years ago. We can't afford another five. This current THS on Jefferson Street has been extremely overlooked since its inception in 2010. The owners of that residence, Trina Team, have not been properly managing it to the levels they said they would have adhered to in the contract. This house is located 780 feet, as the crow flies, from Merrill Middle and Elementary School. And I've watched children walk directly to this house with residents standing two to four feet from them every morning and every afternoon on their way to and from school. Many people in our neighborhood do not know about this house because it was kept very quiet. Even some of you sitting here today did not know about it till we brought it to you for help. The statements of saying that they're being GPS monitored are irrelevant in this situation. These children are walking directly to the house. The GPS is not going to alert because they are not out of bounds. Mixed with the extremely large gaps often seen in house visits, it's an absolute tragedy waiting to happen. I've spent many hours watching children go up and down our street to ensure they are safe. And I do my best to inform the children as to what side of the street to walk down, which houses are safe if they are ever approached, and to let their parents know that the house on the corner is bad and they can come talk to me anytime they would like. The house monitoring has definitely not been completed as Trina Team agreed to do. And this was submitted from their timesheet. I wrote three days down. Day one, 6:20 a.m., 12:20 p.m., and that was it. Day two, 6:05 a.m., 2:25 p.m., and no more. Day three, 7:50 a.m. and 11:40 p.m. And those were school days. Over the years, we have been asked to do things like take down plate numbers, call when we see illegal activity like women coming in and going, like women coming and going all hours, the lady who regularly went there with or for drugs dancing topless in the driveway, residents having intercourse in a car parked on the side of the street, or just sitting outside watching us all day. The communication of this residence was so bad, we didn't know who to call for what. We would call monitors with issues and sometimes they were addressed, others, other times nobody ever showed. Over the years, the monitors have repeatedly told all of us, I don't blame you, I wouldn't want this next to my house either. These guys are criminals. They don't think like we do. They aren't supposed to have cell phones. They all do. They don't follow rules. We find drugs, drinking, they get revoked, they just come right back. My wife knows that when I come here, if I'm not back in X amount of time to call the police, yet we have no reason to be upset and it's okay to be next to a school. It's a very unfair position that Trina Team and the DOC put us in. Most of the times, if we call, the residents will know exactly who called on them and what's to guarantee that they're not going to retaliate. As I stated earlier, the Department of Corrections is looking to put more of these homes in Oshkosh. No neighborhood is exempt. Please do something to stop this from happening to more neighborhoods and from more children growing up with the fear that all of ours have. I'm giving each of you a copy of my son's writing assessment that I was given by his teacher. I'm pleading with you to keep these houses away from schools, parks, and other gathering places. Our first and foremost job should always be protecting children, all children, not just ours. And the children in this neighborhood are not. Thank you.
Ms. O'Brien, could I just ask you a quick question? You were saying that the DOC is planning to put more TLPs. Can you share with us how you know that?
We were informed that by Representative Gordon Hinz's office.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Betsy, I'm Betsy Kundy from 1115 Jefferson Street. Before you tonight, on behalf of Midtown Neighborhood Association, I am the Safety Team Chair, co-chair, as well as a resident in this neighborhood. I'd like to share some facts regarding the TLP located 1105 Jefferson. The TLP houses eight recently released persons. It is a tax-exempt entity. The TLP is 780 feet from Merrill Elementary Middle School. The Oshkosh Area School District Facilities Advisory Committee has recommended a plan to build an eight-to-10-track middle school, 850 students, on the existing Merrill site to serve students from both Merrill and Webster Stanley Middle Schools. The Oshkosh Area School District currently does not allow busing of students to school within a mile of school, meaning a lot of these students, if they're within a mile range, would have to walk. As this TLP is in high demand, additional locations are being sought. The current contract will auto-renew on March 31st of this year. The neighborhood has had a lot of issues with this property and we would like the opportunity to further discuss the shortcomings of Trina Team and the potential to have land uses like this regulated by a special use permit. We urge the council to move forward with a workshop to further discuss these issues. Thank you.
Did you say that there was an auto-renew?
There's a clause in their contract that auto-renews and has been auto-renewing every two to four years per dates listed in the contract.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else registered to speak?
No, we do not.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Smith back there? Thank you, Chief. You've heard the citizens' concerns and I know you have mentioned to the council previously that the police department's been to this address numerous times. You just kind of, what's the working relationship between the police department, this transitional housing, probation, parole with these released inmates?
Can you rephrase that?
Well, just kind of what's the working relationship with the police department? Do we have daily calls there? Do we have other issues there? Are we working with PMP for monitoring these people along with this organization owns the transitional housing?
Well, Trina Team and DOC do have a contract to manage this location and there's, they have rules and then there's violations of law. We haven't, we, in 2019, we had 15 calls for service at that location. Majority of those calls for service were as probation or parole advising us that they had issued a warrant for somebody to be arrested out of that location. Typically, that's going to be because they violated the rules. So it's, if they, if the probation officer believes that they've done something egregious enough that they need to violate their probation, then they'll issue a warrant for their arrest and we'll go to that location and effect that arrest on that person. The other calls for service that we received have been assist or check on the well-being of somebody, but no specific criminal acts that have been reported to us. Not to say that they haven't occurred, just they haven't been reported to us.
Okay. Do you have any concerns about it being located within 800, 750 feet of a school? Aren't most, and I know there's not, there's other offenders there besides sex offenders, but most of them have restrictions to how far they can be from a school or daycare or things like that, don't they normally?
Well, certainly the concern of whether or not the TLP is in the neighborhood is a concern of mine. I think it's, I think it's something that we should all be considering and ensuring that we can do better if possible. But we have to find an alternative. The alternative isn't to create homelessness for those who are coming out of prison, but what's a better alternative to this transitional housing? As it relates to those who are coming out of prison, they, they may be there for two days, as some have shared. They're there and then they're gone. And I believe it's 90 days maximum that they can stay at one location or at that location with the potential for one extension to go along with that. We have worked with the neighborhood. We've brought the neighborhood members together along with DOC to try to, to try to work on some solutions. We certainly want the neighbors to report to us if there's activity going on. We've held roll calls out in front of the residents, brought the C-COV out, just letting folks know we're there. We continue to monitor through random patrols through the neighborhood. I've had directed patrols through the neighborhood. We've seen no criminal activity occurring at the location.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Chief, could I just follow up with a question? One of the individuals was referencing some of the inconsistencies with the notices that some neighbors were getting different notices, different residents.
We regularly go walk every neighborhood where we do notifications. And if, if they're missing them, we do a lot of notifications in the neighborhood. I think, I think everybody here will tell you, we hand out a lot of paperwork out there. Whether everybody gets the same one, we'll, we'll put them in a mailbox, we'll try to post them on the house if somebody's not home. But we're consistently walking neighborhoods.
But we don't send out notices when they leave unless it's a notice to a new neighborhood where they might be moving, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Other council questions for Chief?
I guess, are, are we notified or is the police department notified when they do leave?
No.
I didn't, okay.
No. We get, we get, the singular notification is any time a registered offender goes to a, goes to a different address, whether it's this address, whether it's an address on Ninth Avenue, we'll get notification that they have moved. They're required to meet with us. Every, every offender coming out of prison has to meet with us, have a one-on-one interview where we figure out what happened, what, why they've been, what they've been convicted of. And there's varying degrees of registrants. And based upon the information that's provided, we'll do certain levels of notification. A level-one notification involves a community meeting, which we've done when we've had serious violent sex offenders going into neighborhoods, where we'll meet with the community, we'll bring them all together. This is what's happening. This is the person coming in. I'll have Department of Corrections here where they can answer the questions from any of the concerned neighbors.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, do you feel we're getting accurate information and timely information from DOC? Enough time to educate these people, get these notices out there? Do you get enough time to do your job, basically?
Yes, yeah. We recently, we have a notice on a gentleman that was coming out of prison. I want to say his release date is on March the 17th. And we've, we met today with Department of Corrections saying, you got to find somewhere else to go hopefully with this person other than 1105 Jefferson. Because I have concerns with him and I don't want him there. And we're going to, we're going to, we're going to express our concerns with the Department of Corrections whenever we, whenever we can.
Chief regularly does that, but it's really just, he doesn't have veto power over it. And that, that's a limitation that the chief has. And we're not noticed when they're, if they're not a registered sex offender, we don't get noticed at all, correct?
That's correct.
So if somebody sees somebody they don't recognize from a notice, it could be because they were released because of a different crime that they committed. But I, we certainly understand the anxiety that the neighbors have. And that's why we think we need to get Trina Team and the Department of Corrections in here because we have certain authorities that we believe we're doing to the best of our abilities. But Trina Team and DOC, clearly the residents have indicated some concerns with things that are about them administering that contract. And we don't have any contractual relationship with Trina Team, so we can't enforce those issues.
Right, their contract is with the state.
With the Department of Corrections.
But I do have a question for either Mr. Davis or Mr. Lyons about zoning code that's on our books currently. It was my understanding, a few years ago when we changed the zoning code, there was a limitation outside the university transition overlay that restricted it to three per, three people per dwelling unit. And I think this is eight or four per each? So are they already kind of out of, outside the?
This was established in 2010 and back then it was four people per?
Right.
For a family?
But every time somebody leaves, doesn't that then change?
It's got to, it's got to be for a year.
Oh, I see.
For them to lose that non-conforming status.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Does council want to allow, we have someone that? Yes? Yes, please step forward.
That's all right.
Okay, if you could just speak up.
Just because it's on TV. You're a celebrity tonight. Yeah, comb your hair, look good. Yeah, there you go.
Don't wear a green shirt, though, if you see the weatherman.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Chief. There was a inmate at the facility there, came in right around Thanksgiving. His name was, was it Lloyd Pittson? Lloyd Pittson. His record prior to being in there was quite questionable. In fact, Jamie O'Brien had called Trina Team specifically regarding him when they had the notice because he had broken or removed his monitor and took off. I think this was in Wasaw, was it? Washere County. And he left, missing for, I think, several years. I think they got him back in, or caught him in Las Vegas. So when we had the notice that he was coming in, Jamie went and made that call to see what Trina Team had in place to ensure that this wouldn't happen again. Because he had, he was up there pretty high on the list of offenders. She really didn't get, she really didn't get quite a good answer from Trina Team. But regardless, at this point right now, he escaped from that facility.
So he escaped from that facility, but not from this one?
So he escaped, he escaped from 1105 Jefferson. Now, I'll say, I'll say escaped, he's at large. I think he was listed as Oshkosh's Most Wanted for a couple of weeks. I just want to know if any of you folks were aware of that. I look at it because he is a high-degree offender and there's kids in the neighborhood and he's gone. And where he went, I don't know. And I don't know where it stands right now as far as what's, where he is. And I don't know if you knew about it. There was no notice to us. I kind of relate it to like a, a shooting in town where they say there's no danger to the, to the community. But this guy just has a bad record. He broke out and there was no notice to us.
So we certainly appreciate the information that was shared here. What's going to happen now is council's going to have a discussion about setting up a workshop so that more information can be shared and discussed. But we certainly appreciate you bringing that forward.
Just to that last point, I'll?
We're going to, we're going to hold it if you don't mind, so council can have a discussion about a workshop?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So it sounds like we need to send out a list of invitations.
Yeah, I think- Yeah, I think it's appropriate that Trina Team and DOC be here. Typically, our workshops don't involve public input. That's council's call on that one, but certainly the residents will certainly we've got all your addresses, happy to let you know when we can schedule that. I can't make any promises about when that'll be, but I take it that the consensus of council is that you want a workshop. That's kind of the what I was hearing anyway.
Yeah, let us let us have that conversation.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Councilmember Allison Osby.
I just wanted to add to that, you know, if we're going to be extending invites, I think it would be absolutely imperative that we also invite Gordon Hints, Dan Fine, and Mike Schra. And am I missing anyone else? I think those three would be critical to have also at the meeting as well, because a lot of this where our hands are tied a bit somewhat at the city level, I think we need to enlist some help at the state level in Madison in order to help us make some changes.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you. As long as we're doing invites, we might want to make sure that someone from Winnebago County, whether it's the county exec or because they, you know, they put that we approved them to allow them to put that trailer out there on Sunny View with a sex offender. I don't know if he's there yet, but the trailer is there.
Yeah.
So I think they should be part of the discussion, too, because they're required to find spots for sex offenders.
Yeah.
And they had issues locating, just like other counties have, when they wanted to locate them in certain communities and things. So they should I think just as a courtesy, I don't know, Mr. Harris might say who he thinks should be representing the county.
That's what I think I would approach County Executive Harrison, ask him who the appropriate county representative would be. I don't think this is necessarily, in this case, Sheriff Motts. I think it would be somebody either with the county executive's office or the land use or whomever was dealing with that issue, but I know it has some court implications as well, but I'd be happy to extend that.
That was specific to a nine eighty.
Yes, and that's a different situation, but I just think the county should be invited, and the sheriff would like to come, DA would like to come, that's fine. They're all part of the system.
Councilmember Pechal.
Sure. I think in preparing for that workshop, there'd be some questions that I have in regards to like different types of zonings where, you know, the TLPs can be and stuff like that in relation to neighborhoods, relation to different, you know, Mr. Roloff, I talked about having something in a already pre-listed place that there was a half formerly a halfway house in Oshkosh that is not smacked at in the middle of a neighborhood. What other types of uses and neighborhoods and zoning areas can these be in? So having a good description of that stuff ahead of time for council to that. Obviously, we'll do, you know, we do have we have access to that information as to what is allowed, but also maybe the different types of ordinances that may exist throughout the state or the country in regards to that can be utilized to govern these types of placements of these properties. And then finally, and this is the part that I'm I think I'm having the hardest time grasping with all the invites that we have for people, is how long will this workshop be? Because, I mean, everyone, you know, giving giving everyone the opportunity to speak their side, to speak their piece, to bring in their their info, this could be a very long could be a long emotional meeting, and that's okay. Or is this something where we have maybe multiple workshops over time where the layers of information is kind of spread out and given out at different times? I'm just kind of putting that out there in regards to how we how we shape that, because we typically do our workshops either within a meeting.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes, and we're rushing to get, you know, to our seats.
And that's not usually with public input, and we don't, but they are allowed to send things in ahead of that workshop for consideration and then attend it to watch. Councilmember Allison Osby.
So that's an excellent point by Mr. Pechal, and I think, you know, over the years when we've had, you know, a pretty significant issue, that workshop has been reserved for a different day, not a council day, and typically, I think it's been ninety minutes to one hundred and twenty minutes for those types of types of workshops.
So are we talking about an extended one, then?
I would say something like this, when we're there's going to be a number of entities that may have input, and I would assume that the first one would be more educational than necessarily dialogue going on, that I think it would make sense to have it on a separate day than a than a council day. Also, too, the other thing is, you know, I did have a very nice conversation on Friday with Sheriff Motts. He has he has worked with the different agencies, and although this isn't necessarily specific to him, he did certainly offer that he would be happy to join the conversation and share any insight and experience he has had with working with the agencies and things of that nature. So it was a very positive conversation.
And I think in the past, yes, I'm certain, in the past, when my neighborhood had the same kind of concerns, there was somebody from probation who supervised the offenders who were placed in those locations as well, as somebody from, I think, the regional DOC office.
Yeah, I'll work with Chief Smith, because Chief Smith has the primary is primary contact for probation and parole when we do have some contact with them. A lot of great ideas, certainly the idea is to make sure we get everybody in the room, because even one person missing can create a void that we don't want to we don't want to have. And what I'll do is a courtesy to the residents and as a courtesy to our invited guests, take this section of the meeting and just carve it out so that we can have a specific video for this, so that the folks from the DOC and probation and parole know exactly what the concerns are of the residents, and they can see it. You know, this has been about a half-hour discussion, pretty compact discussion that I think the residents were very clear in some of their concerns. Well, I think they they need to hear that from the state. And then we'll also, as Mr. Pechal asked, we'll be able to explain what our limitations are. Frankly, one of the reasons I want the state reps here is because some laws have changed in recent years, and I'm not looking I'm not I'm not making excuses, but I want the residents to understand that. I don't want to give that tonight. I'd rather give a more thorough, full, complete, but as council knows, conditional use permits are if you meet the conditions, you must approve now. It used to be even if they say they're willing to comply with conditions, the council had the discretion to say no. That has now changed. Now, that's usually for things like, you know, fast food restaurants or something like that. This is clearly something totally different, but they're kind of lumped into those same categories, and I think the state reps need to hear that this is not a one-size-fits-all issue from a land use standpoint. We don't have a lot of flexibility because of state law, and I want to be able to explain that to you so you understand what ours is, and if there's a clarification, because sometimes the state makes an inference that we approve these things, we don't approve them, no different than the chief doesn't approve somebody there or not. He tells them, this person, we don't want him here. The state can still say, well, we're still sending him there, and I want I want the DOC to hear our residents, and so I think I'm going to forward that video to those to those parties so they understand what specific concerns that our residents are raising.
And I believe Councilmember Pechal pointed out, too, about looking at what some of the other ordinances and that are. It's been a number of years since I looked at this, but at one point, we also looked at within the region what our neighbors' ordinances are, and I believe since that time, like you said, some of the laws have changed to even allow cities latitude or restrict.
Yeah, I'm sure these folks have clearly been doing their homework. You're going to find an ordinance that says we can't you can't allow it, but it hasn't been challenged, and those are things that the city attorney is looking at, and we'll dig a little deeper as we get prepare for this workshop.
Deputy Mayor Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Talking about digging deeper, I believe we had a workshop in this already about four, maybe five years ago. Chief Groyle was still the chief at that time. So all I'm saying is there might be some handouts or materials that were recorded in that workshop, or we may have them in the archives so that it could maybe get out to council members, because from looking at the schedule for upcoming workshops, we'll probably have some council changes by that time before that, you know, that workshop will be coming.
Very good.
After the election is what I'm getting at, so.
I'll try to balance it out. You know, one of the things I heard from the residents, and I don't know this, but I appreciate the comment, if this is a three thirty-one renewal, time's really short. I don't know if we're going to be able to. I'm just trying to be honest. But if they're not complying, that's an issue between DOC and Trina Team, but there is a fifth Tuesday. If we can get them together in March, fifth Tuesday, I think we do need somebody said it, a couple of you said, this is not a forty-five-minute workshop. And if the council wants to permit, we don't always do it, but we've done it in the past. Couple of times, we've allowed public input. That's going to be up to you. I'm sure they would love to have their input, and there may be some value for the DOC to hear it directly from the residents. Sending them a tape, it might be a good courtesy, but until they get the capture the full feel of that, we'll make sure we notice you folks.
Well, I think where there's a neighborhood association, and I think the one lady mentioned, she's the safety coordinator, maybe one spokesperson from the neighborhood association could put together kind of the feelings of the association, and, you know, it would be appropriate to have someone speak, or even a couple. And especially if anybody's had direct, I know the one lady that mentioned, she kept track of, you know, times and things, so I think it is appropriate. In this issue incident where this issue is that important, that we need to maybe have some citizen input at a workshop.
And I'd be happy to talk to some of the residents to kind of get their input, because I want to make sure that we separate facts from concerns, and please, you need to call us. It's frustrating, and sometimes I think it appears that it's it's not worth the call. It's worth the call every time. So if you call us more, we'll take those calls and we'll respond. I know Chief is committed to that. He'll get his officers out there. If you see something, please give us a call, but we got to make sure that we got all our facts straight so that we can present that appropriately to the Trina Team folks and the Department of Corrections.
And I think it would also be so that we're dealing with facts, you know, important to maybe have a map with the current offender location also, because even if this house is not was not operating, if you look at the five four nine oh one zip code, for example, you'll see that there's probably no place your children can walk that they don't walk by someone who is on the registry, whether or not they're a special bulletin or not, but just, you know, just recognizing that even in this situation, it's not limited to just that location.
I'll see what I'll see what we can do.
Councilmember Pechal.
Sure. So coming back to Deputy Mayor Herman's suggestion about holding off until after the election, just because there might be some turnover, I guess I can understand the need for that, but at the same time, I don't necessarily feel that the neighborhood would last to wait that long to do that. So, and Mr. Roloff, you suggested a fifth Tuesday in March, which is the thirty-first.
Correct.
So is that something that the council wants to embark in, or do you feel you have enough time to prepare for that date?
We have to make sure we have the DOC people. I think from our standpoint, staff would be prepared, but I think it would have been incomplete.
That is spring break week two, I believe.
Pardon?
I believe that's spring break twenty-third through the thirtieth.
Parents? Yes?
No, that's the we're back from from spring break on the thirty-first. So I've checked. I got vacation the week before. So I'll be back, but, you know, if council said, we absolutely want it on the thirty-first, and Trina Team says we can't be there, you want them there. You want to look them in the eye, you want to talk to them.
But even if we have it on the thirty-first, nothing is going to happen that night that's going to change this contract.
Their annual renewal.
Yeah, that that you're right.
So I guess I'm just curious what council thinks about dividing this up between a potential change in council. I mean, I would like to think that any candidates who are running would be watching recent meetings, but just wondering what others are thinking there, because it's not going to get resolved or finished that night, especially if we have a subsequent workshop even.
I'm really, to be honest, I don't really think it's in our hands. I think it's really going to come down to the cooperation and the timeframe that the state agencies are willing to meet. So I think Mr. Roloff needs to reach out to them first and then report back to us. And obviously, if they say they can do it in two weeks, and two weeks is only the option, we're going to figure out how to make it work. And if they say they're eight weeks booked out, well, then it's eight weeks booked out. So, Mr. Roloff, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to them first, I don't think we can really set a date until we you can coordinate with them.
Yep. As soon as we can get them together.
Suggest the level of urgency that council would like to meet with with the entities. Not that that may matter to them, but the reality is that, you know, communicate.
It's important to you.
Yes.
And I would look at that March thirty-first date, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I saw I went right to my calendar and said, do we have a fifth Tuesday coming up? Next month we do, so there's some value to that. So let me do some digging, see what I can do. I'm going to be working with Chief Smith, because Chief Smith has primary contacts with these people, and we'll we'll work something, and the minute we have something that we know we can get them all together, I know you'll endeavor to be there regardless of when when we can get them together, and then we'll notify the neighbors accordingly.
Ms. Kundy?
Yes.
You can take the shortcut next time.
Just move the chair.
Matt's not going to jump on you.
Got to get my steps in. The contract does auto-renew on the thirty-first of March. However, the DOC can rescind the contract with cause at any time with with.
Proper notice.
With proper notice of breach of contract, they are allowed to rescind at any time.
So that could happen now?
Right.
Okay.
So the thirty-first, it does auto-renew, however, they're they can rescind at any time.
That makes sense.
Thank you. All right.
She's hired.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I've sat here pretty quiet all night long, listening, listening to everybody talk. This workshop is going to be excellent, but I want to applaud you people for being organized, being collective, being thoughtful, and more importantly, being strategic about this. So please, please, please keep the strategy up. It's going to work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
I think I got pretty clear direction. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I just wanted to mention, and this is what I'm hoping that it doesn't fall in these dates, is I will be out of the area March twenty-first through the twenty-eighth based on some things that came up at work today.
So we're going to go back on track to pending ordinance. All right. Do we have anyone registered on pending ordinance twenty-eighty-nine?
No, we do not.
Designate bike lanes on Snell Road from Jackson Street to Moser Street. Pedestrian bicycle advisory committee and traffic and parking advisory board recommend approval. Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we have anything on this? All right. Please call the roll.
Herman.
Aye.
Ugrauer.
Aye.
Pechal.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Six.
Next, we have a new ordinance. There will be no anticipated formal action taken on this item at this meeting. That's ordinance twenty-ninety. Adopt state clean indoor air law and regulate electronic smoking devices. Is there anyone registered to speak on this?
Yes.
All right.
Sarah Jean Schlechterman, one twelve Otter Avenue.
My name is Sarah Jean Schlechterman, and I'm a community health strategist at the Winnebago County Health Department. Our address is one one-two Otter Avenue. In my role, I coordinate rethink the Lake Shore Tobacco Prevention Network, which covers the whole county, and I'd like to speak on this ordinance today. First, thank you for working to protect the public health and safety of the youth and our community. I had a phone call with the state tobacco program today, and they're very excited about this, especially because Oshkosh is the largest city in a while to consider working on this policy. So they're excited about that, because we're continuing to try and make progress across the state with this. We don't yet know the long-term effects of e-cigarettes and vaping, but studies are showing that these products contain harmful chemicals and can have negative health effects on the person using the device as well as those around. person using the device, as well as those around them. It took many years to realize just how harmful cigarettes are, and to know the long-term health outcomes associated with using cigarettes. And the health outcomes associated with secondhand smoke of cigarettes as well. And we're seeing a similar situation happening right now with e-cigarettes. Thank you also for recognizing this as an urgent problem and for taking action. In spring 2018, 29% of Winnebago County high school students reported using an electronic vapor product in the past 30 days, compared to only 21% of students in 2016. E-cigarettes are specifically marketed at youth with the unlimited assortment of flavors available. And the recent FDA ban on flavored cartridges only covers a very limited number of products, such as dual pods. But it does not restrict the flavoring on disposable, single-use e-cigarettes and e-liquids. And youth that use tobacco and nicotine products are more likely to be youth of color, youth that identify as LGBTQ, and from a low-income family. These youths are already stigmatized and experiencing many disparities that can impact their health. And when tobacco and nicotine products are specifically marketed to them, it just further leads to inequities. 10 years ago, when the Wisconsin Smoke-Free Air Law went into place, movement at the local level was very important in the process. As the state saw local smoke-free ordinances put in place across the state, they recognized and responded to the need for a state statute. In 2019, there were 24 smoke-free air policies passed across the state that included e-cigarettes. So not nearly one-third of Wisconsin residents are now covered with a local ordinance that prohibits the use of e-cigarettes in the places that the use of combustible cigarettes is prohibited. While we are concerned about the youth who are using these products, let's continue to work on the bigger picture of youth access to these products. Each year, we conduct tobacco compliance checks throughout, through the Wisconsin Winds Program, at a sample of area retailers with tobacco licenses, as well as vape shops. In 2019, tobacco compliance checks were completed at a sample of 96 retailers across Winnebago County. Four retailers unfortunately sold a nicotine-containing e-cigarette product to our underage volunteers. All four of those retailers were in the city of Oshkosh. And rather than punishing youth for possessing or using these products, the focus and penalty should be on retailers that sell to our youth. We need to provide cessation support to these youths to break the cycle of addiction to these products. We don't expect this trend of e-cigarette use to change unless we do something to change the conditions where these products are less successful, less marketed to youth, and use of these products are not a social norm. Thank you for your work.
Sarah, could I just ask you a quick question? So with the data, does it show that in communities where they do have tighter controls, that the increase that the students or the youth who are not able to get the vape products then turn to other cigarettes? Is there anything on that, or just curious?
So there's definitely data associated with the use of e-cigarettes. So youth that may start using e-cigarettes are more likely to end up turning to cigarettes later on in life.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else registered?
I do not.
All right. There'll be no formal action on this item. It'll come back for further discussion. And we have new resolutions. Resolution 20-91, approve developer's agreement for Oshkosh Avenue, North Coller Street, and Northwest Field Street. Is there anyone registered to speak on that item?
No one is registered.
Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Davis, is this kind of just cleaning up some of the lines of some unusual lot lines? Is that?
That's exactly it. There's some unusual lot lines, we're just trying to straighten out for the benefit of both property owners, and it doesn't change any assessments, it just changes, cleans up the lot lines.
Could you just maybe point those out? I know it was kind of hard to see in our packet where the lines are.
Yeah, it's the separation between Lot 1 and Lot 2, that you can kind of see the old lot line kind of jog back and forth. Now there's just one jog. If you want to count it as a surveying technical term, there's just one jog to the line now.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Any further discussion? Could we please take the roll?
Herman.
Aye.
Mugerhour.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Six.
Next, we have resolution 20-92. Approve the Sodas District Master Plan. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this?
No, we do not.
Pretty exciting resolution. Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Davis or Mr. Lyons, do you want to share some highlights? We've had multiple workshops on this.
Yes, and it's been the culmination of a lot of people working on this. A lot of the stakeholders, the advisory group that we put together, we've had good public participation. Highlights a lot of the things that we're looking to turn this area into a destination that's very walkable, that's a combination of different land uses, takes advantage of the environmental riverfront, the lakefront, cleans up some of the old industrial areas, and it provides traffic circulation not only for vehicles, but bikes and pedestrians throughout the neighborhood. So those are kind of the highlights of what we're trying to accomplish.
Another opportunity for more public access to the water.
Yes, absolutely.
That is limited. Very good. All right. I guess we'll take the roll on 20-92.
Herman.
Aye.
Mugerhour.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, next is council discussion, direction of city manager, future agenda items. First one being future workshops and agenda items. Deputy Mayor Herman?
Reference Future Workshops 33A. I will not be able to make the March 10th workshop with Oshkosh Corp., as I'll be having surgery on March 9th, and will not be able to attend the State of the City or council meeting or the workshop.
Thanks for giving the advance notice.
Mr. Herman, you sure go to great lengths to miss a couple of meetings.
Yeah, at the end of my career, 10 years, I have, I missed like one meeting a year now. This year, the last couple of months, due to a back issue, I'll miss about four council meetings, so.
We wish you well.
Thank you.
Speedy recovery.
Yes, I hope so.
There's also a workshop on website changes.
And that will be, that will be, you know, come as you are, we're gonna have some laptops. If you want to bring your own laptops, your own tablets, please do. And help us, help you identify issues of concern. You can come as early or as late as you want, we'll let people there working one-on-one. It's a hands-on, one-on-one type of workshop, so.
And if you can't make it, please send a list of your concerns or items to Mr. Newman.
That, thank you.
Or Mr. Roloff.
Mr. Newman, because I'll pass my, Mr. Newman, so, yeah.
Would it be at all beneficial to push that back a bit, knowing everything IT's been going through for the past rough month? I know you're gonna give an update a little bit later this evening yet, but I know that's still a good four weeks away, but if needed, there are other priorities than having that that night if needed.
I'll ask Mr. Newman. He hasn't told me that, but I'm sure because it's a month away, he's like, oh yeah, things are good, but you never know. I'll ask him that, I appreciate that. If I get an answer that, along those lines, I'll report it at next meeting.
Sounds good.
Or was that a date you were gonna be on, Councilmember Allison Osby?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's not like we could use that as another option, because you would like to be there for the other one, right?
It's whatever's in the, that most people can make.
Yeah, it's spring break, I will also be absent from the March 24th meeting, just to give you advance notice of, thanks for fessing up first, Councilmember Allison Osby.
Is anybody else gonna be on spring break? Is anybody gonna be here?
I hope to be here.
Is it gonna be three of us?
I hope to be here. We covered enough that we sit in the chair.
All right, then. Next, because we already had the discussion on the workshop of the TLE, we will move on to joint city-county resolution to express concerns over possible federal order to deport and repatriate Hmong and Lao U.S. residents. Mr. Peschel and I both have had some conversations with some of the Hmong community, and we were contacted by the county board, or several of the county board members, and the Hmong Service Center and some of the Hmong community would like to have a discussion or a resolution in support of their community or our community. Mr. Peschel, would you like to share any more detail?
Yeah, you're good so far. Well, I guess, what, you know, I guess what's kind of going on here is that this is, when you talk to the Hmong community, this is something that's very scary to them, to have to have set up their homes here roughly 40 years ago, and to become ample citizens in our community, to be having an impact in our community, than to be told that that doesn't necessarily matter, and that you might be forced to go back to a homeland.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. Let's not give misinformation that the, yeah. It's not my understanding this impacts those who are citizens. It's my understanding that this is for those with final orders. So let's not spread.
I'm not spreading rumors.
Wrong information.
That's not disinformation. It's information that we're not absolutely sure of yet. So let's put it that way. But this has caused a concern within our community, and not just our community, but our communities around us. And so with an effort to show some level of importance to their impact on our community, I think the conversation is around having some type of resolution that either our body or the county board and the city council.
Or a joint resolution.
Or a joint resolution shows, passes in support of our Hmong community. So we're looking for.
Yeah, I believe the county board's gonna take this up in their March meeting, so.
I'm not aware when they're gonna take it up, if they're gonna refer it to committee. Depending on what the county does, if they're taking it through committee, council may not want to wait. It's really gonna be up to you. Clearly, it's a policy issue for the council to talk about. The mayor and I talked about it, and I had suggested that she contact Ms. Yang with the Hmong Service Center. And originally, up until what, yesterday, Mayor?
Right.
Ms. Yang had said, please wait.
They wanted to wait until they had made attempts to get some more concrete information, and now they feel like they've gotten as far as they can, and would like to pursue a joint resolution between the county board and the city council, if possible, so.
So my intent would be to, if council wants to bring this forward, we're gonna need some more information, because there is a lot of.
Yeah, I'm lost right now.
Yeah, I'm confused.
You're both not on the same page, so I'm certainly not on the page with this. So I'd like to find out more information before I make any recommendations.
I received, actually, the first contact, I had the mayor forward me some information, so I'll forward that to council in case you haven't already seen it. And I apologize, I, it's been out there for about a month or so now. But I'll send it to the council ASAP, so you have it, get an understanding. But there are a lot of unanswered questions, and so that's, somebody said, oh, it's as few as 35 people. Well, it could affect as many as 35,000. There's a big difference between 35 and 35,000. So I think that's where the Hmong community's a little concerned, but I'll pass on the information, and council can educate themselves, and, you know, we can bring a resolution forward for your consideration, once we have some facts together, because there's still some unknowns. Is that a good way to say it, Mayor?
Yeah, a lot of it's, from what I understand, some verbal negotiations, and we have not yet heard from the State Department how many people exactly would be impacted, so.
Yeah, I mean, we worded it purposely to say residents, because it's not citizens, it's residents, but those are non-citizens, and understanding the criminal activity. But the question is, is, do you repatriate and deport them?
Okay. And the last item on our council discussion is for staff analysis of the recommendation from the AdHOC Committee on Alternatives to Replace Special Assessments.
Madam Mayor, staff provided a memo with some background information and some analysis of both the committee's recommendation, as well as the other options that the committee had considered. Councilmembers Mugerhour and Miller were on the committee, they, I guess I would defer to them to shed any light. We wanted to provide you with some, a broad view of different options that are out there. The reasoning for the committee, and I think I'd probably ask Mr. Mugerhour to comment on that. And then staff was made aware that the city of Janesville is actually soliciting proposals from firms that do an analysis of, my understanding is, the sort of the engineering, public work side, the financial side, as well as the legal side, associated with special assessments. It may behoove council just to kind of say, let's see what Janesville puts together and take a look at it, and see if there's anything else that might shed light on it. Otherwise, we'll take your direction on where you want us to go from here. But given that it's out there, it may be worth looking at. Councilmember Mugerhour, you were the chair of the committee.
No, thank you, City Manager Roloff. No, he summed it up pretty well. Obviously, you were all informed as to what the committee had made a recommendation of, and their purpose and why they were doing it. You know, in the end, it was a flat rate charge. I know we had a closed session very recently regarding just some of the legal sides and complications of that type of a structure, and some challenges that it places on us to prove that it's, you know, something viable, something that we want to support. So at this point, it's on us to determine if we want to do anything going forward, if we'd like to give staff some more time, or if we would like to just pause, or if we'd like to hear what Janesville and their RFP generates. I think that's where we kind of sit at this moment.
So are there any other meetings planned?
No, the committee, no, the committee has executed their purpose, and they are done, unless we, you know, so ask them to, you know, re-up if they'd like to. But at this point, their work is done. They've made a recommendation, and it's on us to discuss and determine how best to move forward.
All right. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I feel bad throwing this out there, really suggesting it, because Matt's put so much blood, sweat, and tears into this. But this Janesville proposal looks pretty comprehensive, and I think it's worth our weight in our pocketbooks to see what they come up with. Everything they do is gonna be out there in the open for us to see. It's out for a proposal and looks pretty comprehensive. So I don't know if you agree with me, Matt, but I know all the work you've put into this, so I'm kind of raining on your parade, but.
Not at all, not at all. No, I happen to agree. I think what they're looking, potentially looking for, it's at least good information. And, you know, they're gonna run the whole gamut and look at every side of it, just like we tried to do. And more information is better. I'm okay with doing that, if that's, you know, if that's what this council so chooses to do. I don't fault that idea at all.
So nobody's bringing a resolution forward on the recommendation? It sounds like this can just kind of mature and ripen a little more.
Staff wouldn't be prepared to bring it forward with the recommendation in that regard, because of the equity issues. Mr. Pitts had spoken, you know, he gave a more specific example of the equity issues, but that's a concern that staff has as well. We don't disagree on everything, Bernie.
And I think, I mean, when is Janesville's coming out?
The RFP is already out.
Oh, it's already out, okay.
They expect the work to be completed by whomever they choose, by, I believe it was the end of June.
Oh, okay, so, not anything.
Proposals were due.
Soon, okay.
Tomorrow, proposals are due tomorrow, and contract completion, according to their RFP, says June 26th.
Okay, so we're delaying this for a few months, then?
Three months or four months.
It's my recommendation that we let them spend the money and do some more legwork for us.
Oh, no, I don't disagree. It's just, you know, just to clarify, because obviously, media is here or maybe watching, just so that the public is clear that this isn't something that we're acting on right away. I just wanted to make that clear.
We're not taking action on the recommendation.
Okay.
Councilmember Mugerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, I should, for, for those at home and for those listening in any of the media channels that we stream on, one of the, the main sticking points was the simplicity of the recommendation. I think I'll just, just speak to that real quick. That committee sought to choose or to recommend something that was simple, easy to understand, and that could easily be communicated. And I love the, the thought process behind it. It just may have been a little too simple in terms of how to implement it and how to legally defend it in the current place that, that we have to, we have to do. That, you know, when we put something out there, it's got to stand up to the test. And under state law, that, that this one just doesn't necessarily meet that threshold that, enough for, for, for staff to give their full-throated support of it at this time.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up, I think it's appropriate, and I'll talk to Councilmember Mugerhour about just forwarding something to the Ad-Hoc Committee because we haven't communicated.
Thanking them for their service.
And, and explaining where, where we're at.
Where we're at, yes, certainly.
So, I guess the idea is, we'll wait and see what happens with the Janesville study, and then we'll, we'll bring it back following that. And I'm going to a conference next week. Hopefully, I'll run into the city manager there. Some of the consultants who may be submitting proposals by tomorrow may also be there, and I'll try to get a feel for, for what's going on.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, we have the second opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone registered, Pam?
No one is registered.
All right. Any council member announcements or statements? Doesn't look like we have any, and city manager announced.
Actually, one last.
Councilmember Mugerhour.
And I know, I think Chief Stanley's probably already gone for the day, but Guns vs. Hoses Hockey Tournament or Hockey Game this weekend. I know Councilmember Peck, former Councilmember Peck, used to be a big proponent and big supporter of that. But that activity is this weekend. It's a great fundraiser for the police and fire departments at the Oshkosh YMCA, and they'll be battling in a wonderful game of hockey, so. It'll be on Saturday afternoon.
All right, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have the list of outstanding issues in there. Based on discussions that happened this evening, I'll be adding, as far as the facility studies, follow-up with the council about tonight's workshop, so that I get some direction from council on where we go from there. Staff has a few ideas. Didn't think it was appropriate to talk with FGM there, but we'll, we'll be making some suggestions here. And I will add 1105 Jefferson to this list as a, as an ongoing follow-up to, to keep the public and you informed about how we're doing on that.
So, should that be, should that be entitled something more generally related to transitional living? Because the, the ask that I heard from the neighborhood was that we look at transitional living. Obviously, they were here for that specific address, but I just, I'm wondering if that's appropriate.
I like the suggestion, and I appreciate it. And I will put it more generically rather than specific to that address, and I, I think that's.
I have to admit, I'm not sure that I even understand the difference between TLP and other transition, because there's different, you know, I think, educational opportunities for all of us on that.
We will word it, word it more generically, thank you. Upbeat on recovery of network virus. I did have a discussion with Mr. Newman this afternoon. And we're slow but sure progress. The big thing now is because we're, in order, as we rebuild, we're being probably a little uber-careful in terms of what emails we're letting in because emails were obviously the cause of it. So, we're working on that to make sure that we can filter and allow in certain emails, but still protect us from, from the bad ones. So, that's something we're working on. A lot of specialty software. You know, for example, the mayor had asked about the one, the software we have that tracks board and commission appointments for her. That's a, considered a specialty software because only Diane, my assistant, has access to that. So, those are slowly being added back to, to our areas. Some of the old specialty softwares, we got away with not upgrading to them for a number of years. That, that ship has sailed. We're going to have to get some of those new software. So, that's part of the cost of that, which we will seek through insurance. But that's really where we're at right now. There's still, you know, recovery mode in terms of what we filter in and out. For example, downloading the agenda is a little different than I normally do. So, little inconveniences that we're learning to work around until we can get up to speed. So, it's just little things that we are still working through and, but appreciate the work that IT has. Staff's been very patient, and we're working through it. And when we have something to give you in terms of a final report, we'll provide it to you. And eventually, when we figure out exactly what claims we're going to make with our insurance company, be more specific for you, get you, get you a rough idea of what that is. We don't have that cost right now. So, we're, we're still learning and moving along. And then lastly, just a little commercial for State of the City on March 9th. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and dress starts at 6:30. We're doing a little bit of, we're going to mix it up just a little bit. We are going to start with the awards because some of the feedback we got was that the awards become a little anticlimactic after the address, and people get a little restless. So, we thought we would do the awards first. So, if Emily hasn't already contacted you, she'll be in touch with you shortly regarding the awards process to get you ready for all that. And with Mr. Herman out on the DL for that night, we'll probably, you know, do the team tag approach, and Mayor will probably have you pull double duty in announcing as well as awarding. But we'll, we'll make it, we'll make it work. And we're excited. We've gotten some good feedback from people about coming, and look forward to it. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. So, just the format for that evening, it's open house at 6 o'clock?
Yes, open house at 6:00, address at, starting with awards at 6:30. And I pulled a few strings, and we're going to have some entertainment from the Oshkosh West Choir. Because this is your, that's my.
Must have been hard for you to pull.
Must have been really hard, yeah, yeah.
Threatening to cut off his allowance?
All right. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.